All right, good evening, everybody. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Reverend Calvin Odner with the Morningstar Chapel Church in Milton to lead us in vacation. Please bow your heads. Lord, we ask you to help us open our hearts and minds tonight to your love and your wisdom. Help us submit to your guidance so that the decisions we make here tonight are in line with what you have taught us to be true. Show me your ways, oh Lord, teach me your paths. Lead me in your truth and teach me, for you are the God of my salvation. Amen. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, November 2nd, 2015, to order. Sudi, if you'll please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 2nd, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide a public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
This evening, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Ready, go. To the right pace. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready, two. Little left pace. This is front march. Ready, go. And thank you to the Sons of the American Revolution for being here tonight. And we always appreciate you being here. Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15274.
Okay. One thing I'd like to add is I've got a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals tonight. If we could move that to out of new business and move that in front or right after reports and presentations. If the council is okay with that. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a request. Item Number 10, under Unfinished Business, which is the final SDS agreement. Hope springs eternal on that. We're hoping to get to a point where I have a true, true, true final agreement to provide the council, but I don't yet. So I would respectfully request that that item be deferred to the next regular council meeting. Keep it on the agenda, but it's not ready tonight.
Okay. Anybody on the council have anything?
So are we going to just vote to defer when it comes up? Or you want us to take it? You know, we can't take it. You're not saying to take it.
No, I was just going to make the announcement and hope that when it comes up, it'll be deferred.
You're just going to give us the heads up on it?
Yeah, heads up that it won't be considered.
So really, we don't need to change the agenda on that?
That's correct. That's right.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with moving the appointment up to after reports and presentations.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval of the agenda with the changes stated from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We appreciate your attendance. We've got a couple of proclamations coming up in just a few minutes after we do a little bit of business. So thank you for being here. Next item is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Okay, Sudi, if you'll call the public comments.
Our public comment this evening comes from Ms. Laura Bentley.
Good evening. I'm Laura Bentley, 2500 Bethany Church Road. I'm here tonight to comment on the emails that are circulating regarding the formulation of the CSO. I ended up with a copy of them, so I just wanted to make some observations to you all as I did the planning commission. Three experts stated that the CSO was not a good fit for our city. It seems to me, in reading the emails, that the process was somewhat flawed. So based on that, I'm asking you, as the council, that we'll have ultimate weigh-in on it to deny it. We obviously will continue to spend taxpayer money looking into the emails with our city attorney. We've spent quite a bit of money on consultants, and they've decided that it wasn't a good fit for our city. I just have some other suggestions. I know that everyone, the spirit of the initiative was to find solutions to a problem that we're having, and perhaps there are other ways to get to that AG1 enhancements that aren't related to a CSO that doesn't seem to be a good fit. I think it's great that we engage stakeholders. We need to do so transparently. There are many examples of how we've done this in the past. We've had stakeholder groups that have met with consultants. We've had planning commission meetings where citizens have, you know, in work sessions, worked through getting barns in front of homes, things like that. There's all kinds of great examples of how citizens and stakeholders can improve or help the process. But sidebar, emails to consultants is not a good way to go about doing that. Staff always, I have a ton of respect for the effort that staff puts into bringing quality development to our community. We just need to be really sensitive to conflicts of interest when they arise. We also really need to listen to the planning commission. There are some really smart people sitting up there that you guys appointed. And when they vote three times that something was, is not a good fit, we need to listen to that. They work very hard as community volunteers, and they spend a lot of time doing it. And I watched them for hours last Wednesday night try to work through something that's still related to the CSO, and they don't believe in it, they don't think it's a good thing for our community. In conclusion, I feel strongly that this initiative, the CSO as it is today, is not a good fit for us, and I hope that you will deny it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any more public comments, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda, if you wouldn't mind calling the items.
Our first item this evening is approval of the October 5th, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 15275. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Prime Contractors, Inc. for the repair and replacement of the sidewalk at Thomas S. Birdhouse. Agenda item number 15276. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscape, Inc. for Dinsmore Road stormwater system improvements. Agenda item number 15277. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Smith Real Estate Services, Inc. for Crab Apple Streetscape driveway easement acquisition services. Agenda item number 15278. Next, approval of a memorandum of agreement among the North Fulton cities of Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Milton, Roswell, and Sandy Springs for the development of a North Fulton comprehensive transportation plan. Agenda item number 15279. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a landscape services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscape, Inc. for the field maintenance at Bell Memorial Park. Agenda item number 15280.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to reports and presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call them.
First item is a proclamation recognizing World Pancreatic Cancer Day. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
And tonight, to receive this proclamation, we've got John and Martha McPhail along with, is it Gary Moore?
Randy Moore.
Randy Moore, I'm sorry. With Randy. So we appreciate you guys being here. Obviously, this is a devastating disease. As you guys remember, last year, we dedicated a proclamation for Coach, along with Pancreatic Cancer Day, along in honor of or memory of Coach Mike Scott. So this year, I'm pleased to have you guys here and pleased to present this proclamation. So I will read it out, and then if you guys wouldn't mind coming up and accepting it. "World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,960 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 40,560 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. It is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas, approximately 1,040 deaths will occur in Georgia in 2015, and there will be an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in the City of Milton and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the City of Milton support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Milton are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton, Georgia, hereby dedicate and proclaim November 13th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the City of Milton, and call this observation to the attention of all of our citizens, and that's given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the second day of November, 2015." And Mr. Moore and Mr. and Mrs. McPhail, along with my counsel, if you'd join me to present this proclamation. Thank you for being here. And I've been touched by friends and relatives and sisters and brothers.
Well, thank you for doing this, staff. We really appreciate the love of the citizens of Milton, and hopefully by creating awareness, we can supply and serve for the Sunday soon. Thank you.
That's, we don't have to learn. We're just reading the proclamation. We look at the numbers. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is a proclamation recognizing Veterans Day 2015. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
This time, I'd like to have the color guard, SAR, front and center. State Color Guard is from Piedmont Chapter, the Sons of the American Revolution. And these fellows, by virtue of their membership, are descendants of those who fought in a revolutionary war back in 1775 to 1783. And we will be presenting this proclamation to them tonight. And it reads, "It's a proclamation, Veterans Day 2015. Whereas it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas, the Congress passed a concurrent resolution on 4 June, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11th with appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved 13 May, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, and in order that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars, who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved 1 June, 1954, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe Wednesday, 11 November, 2015, as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting an enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Given under his hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this, the second day of November, 2015." If you all come down, let's present these.
Okay, Sudi, if you'll please call our next item, and I think we changed on the agenda too.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals by appointing a board member at large. This is Agenda Item Number 15286. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. As most of you guys know, my appointee to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Gary Willis, has moved from the City of Milton. Certainly want to commend him. He's been on there since day one, so nine years, and done a great job of serving. So certainly appreciate that. But also, as everybody here knows, Bill O'Connor, who had served us as Economic Development Director for, I believe, a couple of years, we really appreciate that. And so I'm excited to have an opportunity to plug Bill back into the city. We, I think he's a great asset. So, you know, Bill's got a huge bio that should be enviable, and he sure should be very proud of. But I'm, everybody here knows Bill and knows all of his qualifications and all that. So that being said, I am very proud to choose Bill as my appointee for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and would ask the council for approval on that appointment.
I'd make a move that we accept the appointment of Bill O'Connor. Second.
Okay. Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So congratulate you, Mr. O'Connor. And if you wouldn't mind stepping up, we'll go ahead and swear you in real quick. And if I could ask staff to go ahead and publish his phone number. Would anybody have issue or need something or has a problem with the City of Milton?
It's 555-111.
So congratulations, Bill.
Thank you very much.
And if you'll just raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I do solemnly swear and affirm."
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
"That I will faithfully perform the duties of."
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
"As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals."
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
"Of the city."
Of the city.
"And that I will support and defend the charter thereof."
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
"As well as the Constitution."
As well as the Constitution.
"And laws of the state of Georgia."
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
"And of the United States of America."
And of the United States of America.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
You know, and we, as I always say, we always appreciate all of our volunteers, because that's what makes our city great, is the time and the caring and effort you put in. So thank you, Bill.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Looking forward to working with you, Ken. Thank you.
All right. And then, Sudi, yeah, you guys will communicate with Bill and the process. Okay. All right, Sudi, if you would please call the next items on first presentation.
Our first item this evening is consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton. Agenda item number 15281. Next is consideration of U. 15-05, VC 15-05, 13650, Bethany Road by Bethany's Rest, Inc., to request a use permit for a retreat, Section 64-1821, NAG1, agricultural on 26.65 acres using the existing structures. A concurrent variance to allow the existing vegetation within the 100-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, and not to plant additional vegetation, Section 64-1821B3. This is Agenda Item Number 15282.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the first presentation items?
Move to accept the first presentation item.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Sudi, if we can move on to our public hearing.
We have a public hearing this evening. City of Milton, 2035 Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update Public Kickoff. This is Agenda Item Number 15283, Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Good evening. Oh, my God, you can hear me. Good evening. I just want to give you a brief update on the upcoming planning sessions with the Comprehensive Plan. The Milton Comprehensive, 2030 Comprehensive Plan was adopted back in 2011. And so five years from now, from then, is, will bring us to right now, which means we are due for a five-year update. This is a smaller update than the 10-year big update, but nevertheless, will be updated in the plan. The new plan will be called the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and we have discussed with the Atlanta Regional Commission, and they have agreed to help us to work on that planning process. And we have Allison Duncan here from the Atlanta Regional Commission, and her colleague Jared Lombard will also be helping, and she'll jump up a little bit later. The updates to the plan would include the update to the land use map, which would be all of our small area plans. As you remember, we have LCIs and form-based codes that we've done. We're going to put that on the new land use plan, as well as we're going to be looking at the community goals, the needs and opportunities, the community work program. We have a, in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, we have a five-year list of projects, which we have done all of them. So we need to put together a new work program for the next five years. The capital improvements elements, we are now required to do that, since we now collect impact fees. So, the community, the capital improvement element that we submitted this year will update twelve months and submit that when we turn in the revised plan. Also, the transportation component. Public Works is working on a comprehensive transportation plan, and we are discussing with them to maybe have a joint meeting in the spring. And so their end date will also coincide with our end date. We'll also be looking at housing, as well as economic development. Excuse me. Our schedule is, tonight, we're having the kickoff to let everyone know that we're going to be starting that process. We, we're going to be looking at, we're going to have a steering committee, as well as public information meetings. We think we'd have three of each. The Planning Commission meeting, I talked to them last week about their role, and we'll get to that. We'll have a council workshop in June of two thousand sixteen, as well as the council meeting, also in June, to transmit that plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission for their sixty-day review. So, we hope that once that, once we submit the draft and we have our review for sixty days, we'll be able to adopt that comprehensive plan in September of two thousand sixteen. The state deadline is October thirty-first of two thousand sixteen, so we're giving ourselves a month cushion to get that sorted out. Did you want to say anything before I go into the steering committee? Okay, all right. Per our code, Section two dash one-eighty-three, we're required to form the Comprehensive Planning Committee to work on this plan, which consists of the seven Planning Commission members, the Chair of the DRB, and the Chair of the BZA, and all seven of you are required to appoint seven additional members to that committee. So, how do you want to proceed with that?
So, what we'll be looking for in that is either, you can forward to me who you think you might want to appoint to a CPAC for this project for about the next year. That would be great if you're at a loss for who might make a good CPAC member. Feel free to reach out to me. We've kind of assembled a list of folks that come to mind, if that will help start your thinking, but certainly not trying to influence who you might select to be a part of that committee.
And, excuse me, if I didn't hear that, this person become districts from each folk district, each council member's district?
Yeah, per the code, it talks about districts.
That, that is pretty standard of our language, adds some other qualifying criteria.
And what's the, the schedules as regards to meetings? So, do they know?
Yeah, I think you'll hear that as we do this kickoff, yep.
Yeah, so, we are thinking that we would have those appointees from you guys between the next meeting, as well as the first meeting in November, I'm sorry, December, so that we could possibly have a first steering committee meeting mid-December to discuss the whole schedule. With discussions with ARC, we're looking at having three meetings of the steering committee and three public information meetings throughout the planning process before we get to a draft. Any questions? Okay. So, I will look forward to getting your appointees so that we can start with the process. The Planning Commission remembers all too well the last process, but they are on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, sir.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing portion. Okay, is there anything else?
It was simply to get it sort of procedurally kicked off and to notify you that we're looking for your appointees so we can move forward.
Okay. Sudi, if we could move to our next public hearing item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Enterprises LLC, Doing Business as Milton Shell, located at three-one-zero-five Bethany Bend, Milton, Georgia, three thousand four. Agenda Item number fifteen-two-eight-four, Ms. Stacy Ingless.
Good evening. The item before you is simply a matter of formality that ownership has changed, and so the new owner is coming forth asking for approval of an alcohol beverage license. And staff recommends approval. They followed all of the recommendations of the city.
Do you have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from council? Sudi? Okay, now I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item number one-five-dash-two-eight-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz. I'm going to call it Councilmember Thurman. I couldn't tell between Councilmember Thurman or Morik, but I believe it was Councilmember Thurman as a second. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have anything under our zoning agenda, so if we could move to unfinished business. Sudi, if you please call that, sound that item.
This item is consideration of the final Service Delivery Strategy Agreement between the City of Milton, Fulton County, and all other municipalities in Fulton County. Agenda Item number fifteen-two-seven-two. This item was postponed at the October nineteenth regular city council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I had forecast at the adoption of the agenda, I will be asking the council to go ahead and move this one to the next regular council meeting agenda. You may recall, the last thing we did approve, the consent order, we have gone ahead and done that as a means of getting ahead of it in case that does become right for the court. To take that up, that was the consent order with respect to the use of the funds for purposes of roadway funding in Fulton County. This, however, contains a lot of moving parts. Milton is one of the only jurisdictions that has actually made sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's crossed with respect to our portion of the final intergovernmental agreement. There's a lot of cities in Fulton County, though, and not all of them have done that yet. So, we are still waiting for all of them to get their modifications in before I'll have anything to finalize for you. My recommendation is to postpone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to defer the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, regarding lease and joint use of, nope, it's the wrong one.
Go back.
Retract that. I'll move to defer the final service delivery strategy agreement between the City of Milton, Fulton County, and all other municipalities in Fulton County. Agenda Item number one-five-dash-two-seven-two. Second.
Okay, I got a motion, Councilmember Los, second, Councilmember Morik.
That's a deferral until the next regular council.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, Sudi, you would please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, regarding lease and joint use of municipal court facilities. Agenda Item number fifteen-two-eight-five. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, good evening. This is the bringing forward of an intergovernmental agreement that I think was contemplated as part of our planning and our budget process, where we would form an agreement with the City of Alpharetta to begin using the court facility that's in Crab Apple for our needs, our municipal court. We have courts on Mondays and Fridays, and uniquely, they have them on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and that fit, just seems to work. There was available space that had been vacated by the Parks and Rec Department in that building as well that is suitable for our needs, and can house our court clerk, our court administrative assistant, and the judge. So, we worked with this intergovernmental agreement, and it initially has a term of five years, with five one-year extensions. It contemplates that we will be able to build out the interior space to meet our needs. That is budgeted. It will grant us access to those spaces Monday through Friday during normal business hours, and to the courtroom facility itself on Mondays and Fridays for our court needs. It allows us to, at our expense, if we want to, and I believe we will, change the signage that exists out there now to incorporate our name into it, so that the facility is branded with our name on it. I can tell you that was with every intention tonight that I was going to present this to you, and here in about forty-five minutes, it was going to be presented to the Alpharetta Council. I still believe that to be the case, and don't have any reason to believe that it's not the case, although in a search of their agenda, I don't see this agenda item on it. So, I say that tonight to say, I'm still going to ask you to move forward and approve this tonight. I believe it's the right thing to do for our future court needs. It's hard to build a court facility anywhere else for three thousand dollars a month. That return on that investment line would be way out in the future when we can use a facility that's already existing and sitting vacant at the time that we need it to, that we need to use it in an area that will be our downtown in the next year. So, I'll go down and talk to Mr. Regus and find out, just make sure that there's nothing that happened, I guess. The practical result, if you approve it and they never do, is that it never became a binding document. So, I don't, Ken, I don't see that there's any risk in asking the council to move forward tonight, and I'll just follow up with Alpharetta to make sure that there's nothing that's changed. In the event that you adopt something tonight that they decided they needed to offer some changes to, I would have to bring those back to you before I could just consent to any changes beyond the document that you have in front of you tonight. I can tell you the document in front of you tonight has been reviewed by Ken's office and has its legal approval. So, from a policy perspective, from an operational perspective, from a moving forward perspective, this is the right thing to do for our court and get it over in that area. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on this? Bill?
I was looking through this, and Article C, it's lease and lease premises. Previously, and up until recently, we've been using that facility over there for other purposes, community meetings, whatnot. I didn't see any provision in here for continued use of it. Is it implied, or what's?
Well, this agreement is specific to the court function itself. So, it talks about those spaces that we will have access to Monday through Friday, and guaranteed Monday and guaranteed Friday. Alpharetta, as is evidenced in the Literary Festival that we're hosting there in November, they are still open to us using the facility when they don't have other uses for it to meet other community needs. But that happens independent of this intergovernmental agreement that is very laser-focused on court itself. So, just because it doesn't speak to it doesn't mean that they have any less interest in allowing us to use it. But it's on a case-by-case basis, based upon availability.
For sure, for sure. Also, in that same article, there's Article C-two, one-two, third line down, it mentions interior alternations. You mean alterations.
Alternations is a fine legal term of art for alterations in any other facility.
Actually, very new to the American dictionary, but we just picked up on it. We're way ahead of our time, Councilmember Los.
Spell check.
I'd like to, I'd like to witness that. Those are progressives.
Okay, any other?
Excellent catch.
Want to do any other, any other questions? Rick?
Yeah, just one quick question. I know it definitely makes sense moving over there because when we're going to be building City Hall, what's precipitating to move earlier than, let's say, the latter part of two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen?
Partly one, because of its availability, and two, because it's the judge's desire to move into a more formalized court setting quicker, sooner rather than later.
Okay, any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve for consideration an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, regarding lease and joint use of municipal court facilities. Agenda Item number fifteen-dash-two-eight-five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Kuntz for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next, unless there's anything else, we'll move on to mayor and council reports. Does council have anything they want to report on?
Just want to say the carbon in Crab Apple was a great event that was put on. I think that was very well attended, and everybody seemed to have a great time. And so, just appreciate the staff putting it together in a court, and Angela worked hard on that, and great seeing the firemen out there. Everybody just had a great time. I think it was a very well-done event.
Yeah, good deal. Thank you for everybody putting that on. Anything else? I want to ask, I know we talked about our next work session. There was some interest in talking about the AG1 enhancements. But also understand, Planning Commission and CSO and whatnot have requested to move that out further. So, I'm not real, I'm just, between us, I'm not real sure on which direction we're going and if council wants to move out further or still here, here, this, as we planned. I know we took it off of our agenda. It was interest, but is there any discussion on that? Or we still want to have our work session and discuss that? Or is it, Ken, is there any legal thing that has to do with?
Before you take it from a legal perspective, can I just kind of articulate where I think we are at this point?
Right, that's all.
To make sure we're on the same page as to where we currently are. There was a conservation subdivision ordinance that was, through motion and vote, the direction of the council was to have it proceed concurrently with modifications to the agriculture, what we were calling this enhanced AG1, modifications to AG1. I can let Ken explain the nuances of why we believe that there's these text amendments that need to go along with that so that it actually becomes a document, if approved, one that could be applied. Having said that, it was before the Planning Commission at their meeting of last week. The Planning Commission have deferred those text amendments until their February meeting. And I think the rationale was that they were in the middle of some holiday months, and that they wanted to put some substantial work to them before they delivered something back to the council for your consideration. I didn't believe at the time, and don't believe tonight, that the motion that was made based on the CSO would have allowed me to bring it forward tonight on this agenda, and therefore, that's why it does not appear. Certainly, the council could direct otherwise, and you could say we'd, you know, Chris, go ahead and bring us it in piecemeal, and if you want to see it in piecemeal, it is ready to come back before the council at any point in time. Having said that, I'll defer again to the city attorney's comments as to whether or not practically that makes sense to bring them forward in a piecemeal fashion, or whether it makes sense to wait until there's a recommendation from the Planning Commission of these text amendments. I don't anticipate that to be before September, before February two thousand sixteen. Ken, do you have anything further?
You know, I really don't. I mean, that's, City Manager's accurately summed up what occurred with the Planning Commission. I mean, they did defer the text amendments to the zoning code. They did at least pass upon, what I'm calling, the rural view subdivision regulations. They winnowed them down quite a bit, but they at least did pass them along. So, now, to the extent the council wanted to take some action, what you would have, you'd have a CSO subdivision regulation. You would have a rural view subdivision regulation. But you would not have your modified text amendments that literally cross-reference those various sorts of subdivision regulations and serve sort of as the linchpin for how anybody reading through our code would know to go to those development regulations. I think I advised the Planning Commission during the meeting that, at least from my perspective, members of the council, I thought the council was looking for a package. I think I called it an omnibus package that the council was waiting for, and regrettably, and whether it's regrettable or not, forgive me, that's not my, I'm not able to bring that to you. I won't be able to bring that to you until the Planning Commission has reviewed the text amendments and passed upon them, which I believe will occur in February of two thousand sixteen. So, that's the news that I have.
And really, to my point, I want to hear from the council just to make sure, because I think these are important items that we want to discuss and make decisions on. But I don't want to put, you know, I don't want to put off to the holidays and the end of December, or latter part of December, because I don't think that's a good time. Some, you know, people, the community and all is not available, Some, you know, people, the community and all is not available and I think some of the council members may not hear. So it's either, you know, I'm fine with waiting, but I just want to make sure everybody else is good, you know, wait until February or when that's available.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I think taking five months to discuss this issue is an inordinate amount of time. I think if we look at our calendars, we can find some type of holiday in each and every month and probably each and every week out there. We've talked about this in the past, about issues postponing or deferring them, and I'm not sure who we're catering to. The next, I'm sure, we've got Thanksgiving this month, of course, and Christmas and in New Year's coming up next month. My anniversary's coming up next month, our wedding anniversary.
Don't forget that.
For sure. Several of them in January. Of course, we've got Groundhog Day in February and it goes on and on. In the spring, we've got spring break for the high schools, so that's, always hear commentary about that, that people are going to be out of town. Of course, then in May, when school's out, people are gone for the summer for two or three months, so we defer items like that for a couple of months. Things move slowly enough in government as it is, I think, without coming up with reasons to defer something. And I think this is an inordinate amount of time to consider this issue. There are other groups out there working on alternative plans for these ordinances and these changes. I'm wondering if a joint meeting or a couple of meetings between planning commission and council might be in order. I think this going back and forth all of the time and allowing for breaks in this discussion because of holidays and other events out there is counterproductive. I think it's an obstruction of policy and procedure, and I think people of this city deserve better, that we're here to make decisions and if we can't, maybe we need to get rid of all of us. But we have a combined group of people here who have the experience and the knowledge and the wherewithal to make decisions. And I think it's time we, we buckle down to this issue and can come up with a final solution.
Two cents. Okay, anybody else?
Really a question for you, Ken. The, and I look at things in terms of risk, you know, obviously we want to have this omnibus solution that's brought before us, but what is the worst-case scenario? I mean, obviously, if, if the council's will is to not do the CSO, we know what happens, nothing happens. But if their will is to do the CSO and a subdivision ordinance change, what then happens if we do do it piecemeal? What exactly would be the risk that we might face if that is the case? If we have to go that route? Even if we have a month delay of, you know, if one gets passed and the next, another month goes by, what are the scenarios that we might face? One, from a development standpoint, from a residence standpoint, from a property owner standpoint, all of that?
Well, I mean, the concern I had, and I hope I articulated this to the planning commission, is that the zoning codes, without a cross-reference to development regulations, so they've put individuals on fair notice of what their options are. That's, that's the key. So if we just adopt the development regulations in a vacuum and there's no reference to them at all in the, in the various zoning codes, and it's not just AG1, then, then how are we even going to advise our citizens as to what their development options are? Because they're not in the zoning code that controls their, their use of land. That, that was my concern. And again, just, you know, could it be done, Councilmember Coons? I mean, it, it could be. It would literally, it would literally be in a situation where you would have staff advising individuals that walk in, these adopted development regulations are your options. I'm uncomfortable with that.
Is there a, I mean, obviously, we're talking about a point of reference from the zoning codes to the subdivision ordinance, right? And I think, you know, is that as simple as just striking out a line that basically says in reference to, from the zoning code to that?
That's a fair question. It was a little, and did I, did you get your question out?
Yeah, go ahead.
It was a little more, it was a little more complicated or a little more involved than that because the text amendments were first of all going to set forth some triggers. Hope the council may recall that. I think we were using the notion of a minor plat, but there had been some discussion about like a 20-acre trigger. So it was more than just go see here. The, the, the vision was, is that if you had, for instance, AG1 and you had less than 20 acres, then you could develop by way of the, the sort of de minimis development regulations that are already in AG1 or that would be, you know, set forth with specificity in AG1, whereas if you're over 20 acres, then you would sort of branch off into either the CSO or this rural view shed subdivision regulation. So it's, it's a little more complicated than just a couple of lines. The, the planning commission had a lot on its plate on Wednesday and, and spent three or four hours talking about the rural view shed subdivision regulations, which was interesting because that was what they call a courtesy review. What was really in front of them was the zoning text amendments, which weren't discussed really at all. And again, I'm not saying which one is the correct one. I think that there was just, they, they felt like, I think, they had a lot put on them and weren't really prepared to go through them in the sort of detail that I, that I think they're used to going through those sorts of enactments. And so really, they got through the, the rural view shed subdivision regulations and sort of made a recommendation, and we could, we could discuss whether they even needed to make a recommendation or not on a, on a sort of, of that sort of a review, but just did not feel like they had sufficient time to develop anything as far as the sort of product they want to put together on the text amendment. That's where the debate ended in February, as far as pushing out to February, and my sense was that they want to spend a lot of time on those text amendments. I will also tell you just one thing before the city manager takes over, is they really got sort of caught up in the notion that they have rejected the CSO multiple times and yet the zoning text amendments linked that CSO and the rural, I'm calling it rural view shed as sort of a package. And they were really struggling with the notion of how can we, how can we sign off on text amendments that embrace a development regulation that we have already nixed several times? I'm just trying to give you some insight into what I, at least what I heard.
Mayor, I can tell you that I just got word from the chair of the planning commission. He said that they, the plan is to meet in December, January and February, and that there's a chance that they could have a recommendation in January, but it might be February.
Just to clarify too, you know, to Phil's comment, you know, I don't know if it's directed to be towards trying to drag this out. I'm absolutely not trying to drag this out. I'm fine hearing it, you know, ASAP. I just know if we do choose to do that, the planning commission, again, they wanted to work on it and it would be, as they're saying, February. So I'm fine either way with, you know, whether we want to hear it earlier or whatever. I just wanted to kind of get the council's direction on, you know, what we're doing here and if we still have our work session and whatnot, so.
Well, I comment, your comment on that, Joe, too. I think we should be working on this, this whole thing concurrently rather than in series. If they're not going to come up with a proposal until February, we won't get it until March.
Absolutely.
Then what's to say it won't go back to planning after that? Two or three years ago, we came, we're coming out of this, I'll call it a recession, and all of this development started to take place again, and people were hollering all over town, you've got to stop these guys from tearing down our trees and clear cutting and grading out here. And that has been the louder outcry out here. It's from the majority of people, and I think they're expecting us to come up with something. I think CSO is, as you put in your, your legacy there, is one of the tools in the toolbox to accomplish this. And I think, like I proposed earlier, suggested anyways, maybe we need to have some joint meetings out here to get it all out at once and to discuss it concurrently rather than a series scenario out there where we're going to wait for five months before we even hear anything from them. So it's, this is a discussion, I think, the people, the majority of the people out there want, want resolved and it's, I think we, we need to step up and kind of accelerate these things. We've been talking about it for almost two years now, and I think it's time that we came up with some substantive language to address all of this and to kind of assuage these people that are hollering about all of this overdevelopment we're doing. And we're only talking about a discreet amount of property out there, really, that's open space, that's available for any type of subdivision development, no matter what you want to call it. And time's wasted, and once this stuff is sold out there and developed, you know, that, that backlog or that inventory of property continually is decreasing. So we're going to, we won't have another opportunity to do it over again. Once it's done, it's done. So I think it's, we need to take this heifer by the horns and move it forward.
And again, to clarify, my intention or desire is not to put it out till February or March, but I'm asking the council because if we wait on the planning commission's recommendations, it is going to be out there. So the council has to decide if we, and I like your idea about having some concurrent meetings, but the council has to decide, do we want to continue moving forward or do we want to wait till the, the planning commission, their desire to have something to do.
Let's respectfully jump in here real quick and say we've kind of gotten fairly in-depth on a topic that is not on the published agenda tonight. This has turned into a conservation subdivision ordinance discussion. We really can't do that.
Absolutely. I was just asking, like, schedule meetings.
What I'm looking for is whether or not the council as a body is interested in bringing forward the two ordinances, the two subdivision regulations that are prepared for council presentation, to bring them forward in advance of the text amendments, or if you have, or, or not, or if you have different direction. But let's try to stay out of the nuances of the codes themselves if we can.
Hold on one second, Bill. It's Bert and then Joe and then Bill.
When, when would, advertising-wise and all that good stuff, would, if we could bring them forward, when would that happen?
The two things that are ready are not part of the zoning code, so they could come forward as soon as first presentation of the next meeting.
So we got first presentation in the meeting two weeks from tonight?
That's correct.
And here in the first meeting of December.
That is correct.
Joe?
Yeah, well, two pieces. First, I mean, we're here as a, a council meeting. We're not taking a vote on this. You're saying we can't even discuss it? I don't remember that being a requirement.
Well, I think as anything, you know, and, and Ken, this was a concern. I mentioned to the city manager as well. I, I think that given the sensitivity of the issue, it also has to play a part in this. I mean, this is a pretty big initiative. It's not on the agenda at all. And, and so I think that the, that, that the topic that got sort of presented as, as in the context of a, of a mayor and council or a staff report has sort of blanched into, let's discuss where we're going on an issue that I got to tell you, my suspicion is, there's a lot of members of the citizens of Milton that would want to be, be a part of this discussion. That's my only concern.
I get that, but if we're trying to figure out when this needs to be talked and taken action upon.
That's perfectly appropriate.
Okay.
That's perfectly appropriate.
I would agree. We shouldn't delve into the details of that.
And I'll be the first to say that perhaps when I was going through the planning commission, I probably led us there, so I was trying to sort of back us up a little bit. So mea culpa, and there we go.
And just so, I brought this up, but my intention was just to talk about, do we want to continue on with the meeting? Or do we want to wait, you know, wait till February? So it's, as you said, it's not on a...
If we're talking about the crab apple festival, it'd be different, but...
It's not on an agenda, so we need to decide if we want to bring it on to an agenda.
I would like the city to have a joint meeting with the planning commission before we voted on anything. So if we can do that in December, then that's great.
Anybody else have...
I'd like to bring it for first presentation next week, or next meeting.
I would agree with Bert on that.
Now's your opportunity, Rick.
Trying to process all this. I guess, Chris, at one point you asked, do we, and I think Mayor you did too, do we want to consider these concurrently? And I would suggest that yes, we do, based upon text amendments, and they are, both of them are, are considerations for how we develop subdivisions in larger, larger plats. So I think the two should be together. As far as the timing, I don't think we need to push it way out. I guess we need to look at what's really a fair time. When can we get it? I do want to get planning commission input. I don't know, I'd look to you for, for input, Ken and Chris. Can you do a joint planning commission, council, planning session?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you advertise it?
Yeah, if that's, if that's the direction of the council, absolutely.
Absolutely. Has to be advertised as meetings of both entities, but sure.
Okay, I'm not sure, and maybe you can help me, Steph. Are you reading a direction here?
I am not.
Okay.
Well, good, I'm glad we made that clear.
I've got Bert made a, you know, and, and again, we're not voting on anything, but just trying to get a kind of a pulse.
Kind of, I'm kind of, as I'm listening, I'm either putting it into a couple of diff, I've, I've gotten a grasp, I think, a couple of categories, and that's either bring it or joint meeting with the count, with the planning commission, but I haven't seen clear direction in either of those two.
I'm hearing a few folks, I believe, would be interested in a joint meeting. Is that...
I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay, no, I'm just asking. I'm asking, am I hearing a few, two or three council members that are interested in joint meeting? Karen, you mentioned it, so you are.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know, the fact that they've already denied something twice and, and now we're just going to, kind of going around them and deciding on something that they've requested a deferral of, I, I don't think that's a real good...
Was anybody else interested in a joint meeting?
I'd say I'd be interested only because we seem to be missing the point. We hear generalized statement, generalized statements that the planning commission denied this. Did they deny the current version? Did they say, we think this whole concept should be thrown out? That's the stuff we haven't had the dialogue on, and without having direct dialogue, I don't know how we ever get there. I'm just curious to have that exchanged so we can get through. What is it that you disagree with? Why do you think the whole concept should be shot? Or do you disagree with some of the components within it?
All right, and I would say I would be, you know, interested in, in having a joint meeting, and so I think the majority...
Now I have some direction.
Maybe they... Go ahead, Joe.
Absolutely. Okay. I'm sure everybody occasionally talks to their representative on the planning commission and should have gotten some kind of feedback on what their challenges are with it. The fact that the planning commission is, has voted against something that we're trying to continue to discuss is not unusual. We do that all the time. We vote for things that the planning commission votes against on a regular basis, but it's because of the flexibility that we have as a council to make certain decisions and to look at things maybe in a different way with more flexibility than what the planning commission has. So that isn't an issue to me. To me, we've been talking about this thing for so long, it's just time to, to bring it back up. I mean, there was delay to try to work through some kinks, but I got to tell you, I just think that, you know, I'd use the phrase grinding the speckled ax. I mean, either the thing is just not going to work, and we need to recognize that fact, or we need to figure out what's going to make it work. And I think we've been doing more than our fair share of work on trying to make it work for a while. So I would like to see that just come back up.
Okay, to Joe's point, what would the, how would that work? What, what would be the, the timing process on that?
If the thought is that the council just is ready to see it, to debate it and to take action on it, it would come forward in meeting two, two weeks from tonight or the sixteenth of the month in first presentation, so there wouldn't be a discussion on it. My guess is that you'd want to see it then in the December works or, yeah, there really wouldn't be time to do that. So I guess you could see it in the work session next week if you wanted to, but it would be first presentation on November the sixteenth and then for your consideration and vote on December the...
December seventh.
December seventh.
Okay, so that's, that's an option too, Matt.
I'll say something on this too, because I, I, I think, you know, this is a tough issue for the whole city, and we've got a lot of very passionate people on this on many different sides. And some are on the council, some are on the planning commission, and I think as a whole, we've had groups of citizens that have worked hard on this on all different sides of this thing. But at some point in time, we've got to decide what we want to do. And, and I would concur with Joe and Bert and Bill that we need to move forward on this. So, but I also, with my relationship with my appointee on the planning commission, I mean, I've got an agreement where I say, they can say what they want to say and disagree if they want to disagree. I just want to know where they're coming from. And I've got a great conversation with, with my appointee on this thing who, yes, he voted to defer it as such as it was, but because of a, of a, of an understanding that I don't know if he had all the access to, or just the fact that we might disagree, but I appreciate where he's coming from, but I'm not convinced otherwise. I think that we can still have a good discussion among the council with us to figure out what this is through that process as a whole. So I don't think it's a sign of disrespect for our planning commission. I think we've given them opportunities as far as going forward with this, but I think we owe our citizens a decision with regards to where we want to go. And I would prefer that we move this thing forward on the first presentation in two weeks, as Bert had recommended. I, I, I don't see a point in having planning commission meeting. We can do it if we want to, but, you know, what would that bring? That would be an interesting, interesting thing for the media, probably more than anything else, but, you know, from my perspective, I think that we'll get more done, or decide not to do it if we have our meeting coming up here in the near future.
Okay, well, you know, maybe a hybrid is, you know, either move forward on the agenda if, if the council would like to do that, you know, and I don't know, at our next work session, if you want to have planning commission, you know, have a joint meeting on that, or if we can do that or not. I'm, as I said earlier, I'm fine going, moving forward. We have been, you know, it's an important issue and time is of the essence as far as, you know, land that's getting developed and whatnot. So I don't have a problem with that either.
I think the planning commission is probably ready for us to move forward with it as well, just to be honest with you.
Well, possibly as early as next week in the work session, then that might be beneficial. Let's... let's start getting this stuff out on the table between us, and I think we can make some progress, hopefully we'll make some progress, I think it'd be an interesting discussion anyway.
Is there somewhat of a consensus on the council to move forward, which, if we move forward with this, when do we say the dates where it would, we'd actually vote on it December 7?
Sounds like what I'm hearing is that there might be direction to bring it to the work session one week from tonight, and to either formally or informally, and I guess it doesn't really matter which, to hold it, either a joint work session with the planning commission, or to just informally invite them and see who comes, although I believe that if we advertise it as a joint work session of the mayor and council, the planning commission, the planning commission can speak with more authority if they're there assembled as a formed body.
I would agree with, I would think you would want to make a joint meeting.
I will not be here next Monday, I will be at a tax conference.
Okay, would the remainder of the body be here, will we still have a forum that we can move forward and conduct business?
How dare you.
And then what I'm hearing is that it would come forward on November the 16th in first presentation, it would come forward in unfinished business for your final vote, consideration of final vote December 7.
Rick?
So if we go that route, we are breaking apart, we're gonna do, consider CSO as one entity, and then for one form of subdivision development option, and then we'd have the rural view shed at a separate time, is that what we're saying?
You would have rural view shed and CSO together, the thing you wouldn't have is text amendment.
Text amendment.
That's correct. What you would have, if, what I just described carried forward, is you would have something the city attorney recommends against, and that's okay, because he said it's not a recommendation against because it's illegal, it's just a recommendation against because it's procedurally less efficient, and so, just, you know, eyes wide open, that, you know, we're kind of moving forward, contravention of that recommendation, but that is certainly within the purview of the council.
Is everybody clear on that?
Well, and then just to clarify, the city manager, I think correctly stated my position, but it's not illegal, but I will tell you that I think from planning staff, you know, folks that work in government agencies need to be a product of the ordinances and regulations adopted by the policymakers, and for us to have two subdivision regulations that are nowhere linked to zoning codes that are in effect, anyway, that's just not the best model.
That's if they go into effect.
What's that?
That's an if they go into effect.
Fair enough, that's right, I'm painting a hypothetical based upon them going into effect, but having no linkage whatsoever in any zoning code of the city, just, it's not my preference.
Well, it's not, not to say then that we couldn't have it all resolved-
That's correct.
-first meeting in December too.
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody?
That's correct.
Anybody else?
I do.
Say that again, Chris, so the text amendments can't be there on that subject?
They carry with them different advertising requirements with respect to the zoning procedures law, so just, I would want to sit down with a calendar and make sure before we tell you that with 100% certainty that we could have this all addressed by December the 7. One set of what we're dealing with is much less onerous in the advertising requirements of newspaper ads and public, other public ads, the other things, and that's just a matter of the way it's stated.
And, and whether there would be, they would travel with them a recommendation of your planning commission, which at this point they do not have.
Okay, is everybody clear on the direction we're looking at, and the scheduling and all that, everybody okay with that? Director's smiling.
I need to articulate it one more time, just-
Yeah, why don't you do that, just on the record.
Good, I'm glad somebody did.
Can we graph this out?
I can, I can get you a chart, I sure can, so what we'll, what we'll do is we'll advertise it, well, we'll invite and advertise a joint meeting of the council and planning commission for one week from tonight, the 9th day of November at 6 o'clock. I'll publish two agenda items that are going to be considered concurrently between the council and the planning commission, one is the conservation subdivision ordinance, the second is the rural view shed ordinance that they had under consideration at their last meeting, that will be the section of the meeting that is jointly held between the mayor and council and planning commission, I'll then, kind of in sequence, publish an additional meeting of just, additional workshop of just the council, so that we can get to the other business that's already scheduled and already on the agenda for that night. And then it will come forward, unless there's different direction at the outset of the work session, it will come forward for first presentation on November the 16th, and then based upon whatever happens at that meeting, December the 7th is where it will come forward in unfinished business. Got it?
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
I'm seeing your head shaking in the direction of being in direction, okay.
I can get to 70% on that.
Okay, does council have any other, okay, reports? All right, we'll move to staff, Chris.
Great, council, let me just update you on a couple of things, and then I'm gonna check the, I might shoot down to Alpharetta to see if I can get there before their meeting starts at 7:30 to go with this court issue. I can tell you that I have things written here that sounded like good staff reports at the onset of the meeting, and I have no idea why I wrote them down now. We go to the design review board tomorrow night, so it's a good night, the design review board with the city hall project, and I sent you the design book over the weekend, it came from our architect, if you haven't been able to open that link, please do and take a look, we think that the building is really starting to capture the look, feel, and desire of Milton to move forward with its, with its city hall building, so you're certainly welcome to join us tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, if you want to lend any moral or otherwise support to that project before the design review board.
I may need a little bit of, you know, moral support behind me, in case you start throwing vegetables at me or something.
It is, 6 o'clock tomorrow night. At this point, we're shooting for a groundbreaking on December the 1st, on time TBD and all that kind of good stuff, that's still kind of a, just a notice for you to save that date, it seems like a great date because it's the ninth anniversary of the city, and, excuse me, what a, what a good date to be able to do something of that magnitude for the city's future. That's all predicated on the fact that we end up with approvals of the design review board and have construction management on board that decides that December is a good date to get started based upon the date that we want to take delivery of the building, so there's still some things that go along with that, but we're driving to that being the date, and as soon as we firm it up, we'll let you know for sure what time, but please just save that date, it's a Tuesday. We're having coffee for veterans next Wednesday on Veterans Day, between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, if you stop by, any mugs, any, any mugs, the mugs, Wilburn Rudy's or Scratch, and we figured that those are three locations around Milton, to have a cup of coffee with a veteran, we're asking the veterans to come there and enjoy a cup of coffee with us, it was funny, we polled several veterans and said, you know, if somebody could say thank you on Veterans Day, what would you want, and they said, just love for somebody to buy me a cup of coffee. And so that was the whole thought process behind these three locations, is in response to veterans who, you know, clearly don't want much for their service other than to say, hey, thanks, let's have a cup of coffee together.
Sure.
This might be a good tradition to start.
You know, I want to suggest on that, is it a two hour or three hour window?
It's two, 7 to 9.
Two, 7 to 9, you know, maybe we, I don't know if we can do this legally, but, you know, kind of have a, make sure we cover all the, all three spots, so that everybody doesn't come to one, and then, you know, so that we can definitely be there to share a thank versus, you know, in case, you get one place where nobody shows up, and there's veterans there, so maybe we can talk amongst ourselves, as long as it's not a quorum.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'll still be out of town, so.
And the only thing else I've got is just a matter of housekeeping, just in case you tried to find me tomorrow, as a result of some of Paul's 11-year-old checkup stuff, he's got some follow-ups that we need to do with a couple of other doctors related to some of the surgeries he had early on as a child, everything is well, but I will be in doctor's appointments for several, much of the day tomorrow, so I will get back to you if you need to call, but we just decided to take him out of school for a day and get them all done, so that we could move forward with those doctor's recommendations, so I will be back at this building for the design review board, and I've got a school, local governance council to speak to tomorrow night, I think at 4 o'clock, so I'll be easy to find, but if you look for me in the morning and happen to stop by here and say, why is he not in his office, just grab the phone and give me a call, so that's where I'll be. Thank you for those, opportunity for those updates, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Crokov, and unless there's objection, I'm going to head down to Alpharetta and see what's going on with the court agreement down there in their meeting, so if you need to reach out to me, feel free to give me a call, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Really know how to empty out a room. Good evening, Mayor, Council. No more comedy. A little bit of comedy. The, I'd like actually to open by thanking Milton for a very different Halloween experience than I'm used to, it was both personally and professionally, it was a pleasure to open up my door and have two coax children to take more than one piece of candy, as opposed to wrestle them over the candy, all the pleases and thank yous, it was a very different experience, and it was an absolute pleasure, though more of what you'd be concerned with is from the professional side, the officers were able to go out and spend quality time with the kids, they were handing out treat bags with healthy things in there, coloring books, things like that, and got a lot of great feedback from a lot of the community members, so it was, that also was a great experience for us, and we, we didn't have one reportable incident related to Halloween, so that's a testament to the, to the city that we have here.
Yeah, and I would like to say that that was a good message, you know, saw some of the social media pictures with some of your officers out there with kids and all that, sounds a good message.
Thank you, they loved it, you know, it's, it's great to have that kind of, that kind of interaction. On more business note, I just want to let you know that we were granted the DOJ, the DOJ vest grant, it's, it's not competitive, it's, you basically submit it, put the right numbers in, and they'll pay for 50% of your replay, your new vests and your replacement vests over the coming two-year period, so that roughly comes out to about $4,000 a year for the, for the city, so that we won't have to take that out of our pockets. Much of last month, since I addressed you last, was spent improving a lot of our communication channels within the department, we're looking at making sure that we're streamlining our communications, and that what we're intending to put out is actually being received, and that's not, though it sounds easy, it's not always the simplest thing to do, so we're working on improving those channels, also, we're reorienting ourselves around outcome measures such as incidents of crime and accidents, as opposed, some of our output measures that we've talked about a little bit here, in areas such as, you know, number of tickets put out, or number of arrests made, as you know, you know, different things, you do have different impacts on the outcomes, and I think the officers are starting to get a good handle on using their own creativity, imagination, and drive to be able to start affecting things like our crime rates, which we're looking, I hate to do this from a superstitious standpoint, but so far this year, we are at about a 16 and 1/2% reduction in Part 1 crimes in the city of Milton, it's being driven mostly by incidents of larceny, which is actually what drives our crime in the city, when you compare it to other cities in the 25 to 50,000, 50,000 population, in fact, even some of our neighboring cities that go beyond that, violent crime is not our issue, property crimes are what drive our numbers, so being able to affect larcenies and, to a much lesser degree burglaries, though it's down 30%, the incidents are much less, so it's, the significance from, just from a statistical standpoint is not as much from a victim standpoint than it is, but, so we're seeing these numbers drop significantly in 2015, and we'll be setting up goals around those for 2016, to be able to continue that reduction. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Public Works, next. Go ahead, George.
One time, just one time, it'll live with you forever.
Just a couple of quick things to touch base on, the State Route 372 project in the Crab Apple area, the north, northwest connector that we've been working on, GDOT didn't receive bids on that, and as we suspected, they were substantially over budgeted, they got five bids that ranged from 5.4 million up to 7.2 million on that particular project, we had originally estimated prior to going into that bid that it was probably about a $4 million project, which was at that point over what we had allocated for funding, so the 5.4 was substantially more than that, we're working right now with ARC and GDOT to try and identify some funding sources that may help us close that gap, and as you remember, we also budgeted some additional funds from the local standpoint to help us bridge that gap, so we'll be working over the next 30 to 45 days to hopefully find those funds to move, be able to move forward with that, yes, sir?
Can we phase that project?
That will be one of the things that we look at, whether or not that's an alternative for us under the way it was bid by GDOT, or if that would have to go back out to bid, but that, as well as some other utility value engineering options, are things that we're looking at through this process.
Was that a typical GDOT unit price proposal?
Yes, sir, it was.
Can you break out, for instance, the roundabouts?
That, that'll be a possibility, if, if we can't, either through ARC or through GDOT, identify some additional funding, then those types of value engineering options will be things that we need to look at, I think the problem that we run into with, it's not necessarily the deduct of those items, but would be the add of additional items that may not have been in the original bid, so if, for instance, we deduct a roundabout and the values associated with those, but we need to come back with a traffic signal to control that intersection, those items weren't necessarily in that original unit price bid, and so that's where we run into some issues with that, but we will be looking at all of those options to try and move forward with the original bid, just to let you know, that low bid was Baldwin paving on that, so we'll see with that.
So what had we contemplated as the original start work date?
Probably six months ago, but we're hoping to move forward with, I think they can get through their contracting process relatively quickly, which would be beginning of next year, if, if that project was fully funded, as it was bid.
Well, that's a question people keep asking, you know, when you, when are you gonna start that, when are you gonna tear things up and increase the traffic problem and everything?
Well, yeah, that will, that will be an issue over there, I think the way GDOT bids those is, the bids are good for 90 days, so if we can get to a funding resolution on that, that would go to contract relatively quickly.
Thank you.
Keeping in line with projects, bids that came in over budget, we also got the budget pricing in for Webb Road at Deerfield, the intersection improvements we were looking at here, that would be adding left turn lanes on the Webb Road piece, and a left turn lane off of Deerfield onto Webb where we don't have one now, the apparent low bid on that came in at 236,000, we had 185 budgeted, so we're slightly over on that, we are looking at that project to, to try and evaluate those costs, and whether or not we can move some dollars around to either afford that, or come back and value engineer some things out of that project to bring it back in line with that budget. Big Creek Greenway connection, moving forward on our next step with that, we've got our concept team meeting finally scheduled with GDOT, so we'll be going through that concept plan with them, once we get that approved, we'll be bringing that back to both our council here, and Alpharetta and the CID to review the final concept with that, we are moving forward with construction on some of the components of that connection, as we move down, remember this goes from the high school, Cambridge High School, down to the Greenway, so those connections along Cogburn Road, we are moving forward with the construction of those, some of those under local dollars, so the section we're looking at now would basically take us from Webb to the end of the section that we built with the bridge near St. Francis High School, and then allocated in this year's budget was some additional sidewalk money, that we'll be looking at moving that sidewalk on up through the design process to Cambridge High School, so we are moving forward at the local level with some of those, and finally getting some traction with GDOT to move it forward from their standpoint, and what that would allow us to do is then get it into other federal budget programs or state budget programs, and go after some additional funding for other components of that, that particular project. Chris mentioned to you about City Hall, those dates he mentioned, and also the design review board, Kathy and Bob have been working very hard on getting that building the way it looks now, I think if you have an opportunity to look at those booklets on the building, you'll, you'll really like where we're coming out with that, so that one is moving forward. On some operational things, gravel road maintenance, our fall gravel road maintenance starts this week, as soon as we can get some clean weather, so you should be seeing some of that equipment moving around, and I had one more for you. Actually, I'll stop right there.
Well, we got a couple more.
No, I'll end it right there.
Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Anybody questions, Bill?
Last item, gravel roads, have we taken any further look at under drains, cross drains, restoration of ditches?
Ditch work mainly, have not looked at any of the cross drain work, but they have been working on- been working on ditches. They'll pull basically debris out of those ditches and try and, they try to do as little work in adding material in the fall grading as possible, just have not had good luck with that in the past because of temperatures and weather. So this is generally basic maintenance overhaul on the roads, but mostly ditches in the spring.
Well, given the weather that we've had here recently, it's really evident that there needs to be some more restoration in ditches and several cross drains.
Okay. I'll get with you on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know we passed over, but on the Hopewell Birmingham intersection, I know they're doing the utilities and trying to take all that apart, which it'll be great when they're done. But in the meantime, it seemed like it's kind of gotten pretty dangerous. And I personally witnessed one accident that was there as well. I don't know when those conditions might change. Does that just happen when the utilities are pulled out? Or is that just going to be that way until we get a roundabout in there in 2016? It just seems like the curves are real sharp and, and people trying to come that way is just, it's just nuts. If there's a reroute of traffic or something is an option, too. I just don't, people are asking about the safety of the intersection. I just don't know what to tell them.
I can talk to you, and we can look at some specifics after the meeting if you'd like. The plan will go through various stages of traffic control.
Right.
But I'd like to look at that with you and see what specific issues we have, and we may be able to resolve at this point.
Sure.
Maybe worth us, maybe you can get you or one of your guys a site visit.
Do a site visit, yeah.
Check it out.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have Parks and Rec tonight? I'll see.
Oh, no. Jim, we're going to move Parks and Rec to change when Jim's out of conference this week.
Okay. Kathy?
Thank you. I'd just like to list some of the items that will be coming before you in the near future. And I guess the first one I'm starting with is the conservation subdivision. And I think we've all discussed that you'll be seeing it on December the 7th. The next one is the five-year update to the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan, and Michelle really reviewed with you what will be happening with that. We'll be working with ARC on that to have that completed by next October. There are some rezonings that are coming forward. There's one on 13650 Bethany Road to request a use permit for a retreat in the AG1 zone. And you'll be seeing that this month on the 16th of November. The next one is a rezoning for 13201 Deerfield Parkway to rezone from T5 Limited to A medium density apartments for the existing 356-unit apartment development. And that really is just a financing technicality that they've asked us to correct so they can refinance that project. You'll be seeing that on December 21st. And we also have all the, the listing of the text amendments dealing with all the single-family zoning that deals with the enhancement to the AG1 as well as to the other single-family residential districts. As you know, that was deferred by the Planning Commission till February. And I, based on a discussion and working with our city attorney, either that will be coming forward quicker, or if one went along with the deferral, you wouldn't see it until March 21st. So I think that's still up for discussion in terms of all those text amendments where they'll end up. We are working on developing a new use permit for alternate housing for seniors in the AG1. This really relates to the concept of allowing personal care homes in the AG1. This will come before you for your consideration on December 21st. And then finally, the consideration to amend the signs of our zoning ordinance. As you know, there was some, there was a decision by the Supreme Court that affected sign ordinances, and our attorneys have been working that through. And you should see the modifications to our ordinance on December 21st. And those are, in essence, are what is in the queue for the rest of the year. We look forward to the next year with obviously more interesting items as well. But this is it for this year.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions? Thank you. Sarah?
Good evening. First of all, the coffee for veterans, you said you wanted to, Courtney Spriggs is arranging all of that. So to make sure that we have enough people at each one and enough representatives, so she's the one in charge of that. Just a couple of things with Jason Wright leaving, Chris asked me to facilitate the Innovation Academy. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that. It's 11 staff people who volunteered across all different departments. And we're having our next meeting on Wednesday to come up with a project idea that is meaningful to the team, the organization, and has the potential for lasting effect. And so the team, right, the team members are emailing me ideas right now, and they're all pretty cool. And we're going to have a really cool project that comes out of this innovation group. We're working on a business survey that will go out to one for businesses that have offices or office space, and one for home businesses to set a baseline for, we keep talking about our businesses happy in Milton, what can we do to help with their growth. And other than people who either have a really good experience, so they say something on our Facebook wall, or they have a complaint, there's, we don't have a gauge right now to tell if people are happy or not. So this will hopefully be something that we do every year to set a baseline off of, to gauge our success on. And then lastly, I'll be working, Michelle sent me my different parts of the comprehensive plan, so I'll be working on updating that and giving suggestions on the economic development part of that. Yes?
The other night I drove by Alpharetta, and they had music in their town square.
Okay.
And I've mentioned before, art and music in passing, I think that that's a big component, especially for the retail component. We can do, do that in Crab Apple, or we can do that in Deerfield or something like that. Kind of, I would like to, if it's the will of the council, to maybe give you direction to explore that a little more as part of economic development.
That is actually in our strategic plan.
Yes.
That we'll be bringing forward to you hopefully in December at the work session there to discuss that.
See, you're already ahead of the game.
It's there.
There you go. Okay.
So long as it doesn't violate our noise ordinance.
We don't have to follow our own laws. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. All right. And does anybody else have anything else? And I'll open up for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion.
That was the best decision I've ever heard. Carter was forgetting something. I'm trying to sneak in.
I have a motion from council member here and a second from council member there.
Boy, there's a team.
For approval, for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's your